I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Farover School Committee for Monday, April 3rd. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. LaRavi?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's my disclaimer? Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens' input?
There is none.
Thank you. Committee of the whole. Item 3.1 is a discussion of the Farover Public School fiscal year 2024 budget. Our first...
Can I frame it?
Sure. Superintendent Ponce?
Good evening, everyone. So, last week, we were here together and we actually went through the schools. We went down the list and the committee was able to ask questions of the principals this week. We are here, we're going to follow the same process, and we're going to bring departments up. We actually, last week, were able to do the schools with the exception of Henry Lord Community School, but we also got in music, art, nursing, and PE, health, and school committee department budgets. So, we have the remaining departments here. Principal Barnhart is here with us today. Last week, she had parent-teacher conference, so she was not able to join us. She is here and available to answer any questions in regards to her school budget, and then we can go down the line and go through the departments.
Thank you, Superintendent. Does anybody have any questions on the Henry Lord Community School budget? Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dragia?
I think I don't have the page in front of me, but I'm assuming that there was no request denied, that what is in the budget is everything that was asked for by the school?
Yes.
Thank you. I yield.
Nothing on Henry Lord? Thank you. Next department, athletics? Does anybody have any questions on our athletics department? This goes middle, high, right through the sports. Any questions on athletics? Mr. Dragia?
Just had a couple of thoughts on the budget. So, one of the things I think that we've done well over the last several years was we increased the amount of middle school and elementary school athletics. I think that's one of the real good things that has happened. And I think we're adding, I think it was a trainer to make two full times, not, I think it was a little confusing last meeting, but you're gonna have two full time, right? Not two and a half?
Correct, yeah. We're asking for one additional full-time trainer.
Yeah. And I just think that as a system, a lot of times, we look at Durfee, as you know, the athletic director at Durfee. I think it's time that we look at splitting that up so we have leadership in both the elementary and the middle, because it's two different types of jobs. And I know we added an assistant to you, but I think, I'd like to ask the superintendent to look into the potential of having a different organization structure for those departments. Nothing that's happening bad. It's just that once we started to add, then we added a little more. I know for myself, I want to have even more at the younger grades, but it takes away from, you know, the high school is a bear in and of itself with the volume, so I do think that that would be something I'd want to look at.
I did ask Mr. Bustin when he came in for his budget meeting to see where he was and if he needed additional support. He did say he has currently 1.5 for the athletic trainer, and we're asking for the other 0.5 to make it two full-time people. We talked about the athletic director position and whether he needed support in that, and we are monitoring that and moving accordingly. He said at this time that he wanted to keep it as-is, but that's certainly something that he knows that anytime if we need additional support, we can bring it to the table.
Well, I think that the difference in what I was suggesting and what you mentioned isn't the issue of what does Durfee need, the issue of what the district needs was where I was advocating for.
Yep.
So, if I ask the question to Mr. Bustin, "Do you have what you need currently?", he could say yes to that answer, but that would still also lead to the fact that on a separate issue, we would need to look for a different position for the elementary and middle.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but how the question is approached, and if maybe there's other ways to do it, would be my suggestion. The high school is a big job in and of itself. I just put it out there as food for thought.
Yep.
But one of the things that we had just given, and I've thought about this for a few years now, where we gave an award last time, last meeting, to the Farover Country Club for their support and everything, they've been great with working with us. And in times when we had no money to pay for things, that was needed even more. But looking at the budgets like I have, and just looking at fairness, we pay for other places to rent when it comes time for sports. And I think we should also look into the fact of, maybe look at some surrounding places, but we have the resources to pay a stipend of some type to the country club that we don't need necessarily for them to appreciate it. But at the same time, I think a good-faith gesture of, they try to make ends meet in their business, that whether they ask for it or not, what's doing what right, I think we should look into the possibility of creating something. We have to rent Driscoll Rank, we have to rent other places. I don't know why we wouldn't pay for that service as well. But that's my real only concern with it. I think it's just additions. Thankfully, we have enough money to put in the budget with, we don't have those cuts like we normally do, so I appreciate it. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further on athletics? Thank you, Mr. Bustin. Curriculum. Looking at the curriculum budget, does anybody have any questions on the curriculum budget?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dragia?
Just the only question I had on that was there is, I want to say there's an increase, or it says a new position. Maybe the superintendent could just highlight that for the edification of the public of what that is.
Absolutely. The position that we are proposing for the Office of Instruction, Office of Teaching and Learning is for a Director for Social Studies. We have currently Directors for English Language Arts, Mathematics, as well as Science. In the current structure that we have, we have someone who was doing double duty, is doing social studies as well as managing the Title I grant, and that person will be retiring. And we also think that that's a position that, up until now, we haven't had the funds to have somebody totally focused on social studies, and it's time to bring equity to social studies also. So, that person would be overseeing social studies for the district, just as science, math, and ELA is helping.
So, I don't disagree. What happens to the other position?
The other position, that's an existing position that is already budgeted for, the Title I and grants that was happening. So, that position will be posted.
Yeah. My only concern is that, it's not a concern, I mean, I think you could totally justify one of those positions, but we've had millions of dollars over the last several years, additional. So, when I see like this, I don't disagree with the nature of what you just said for that, but then what is going to be added to the position, the responsibilities of the other position? Because it just begs the question that if a person was able to do the Title I Director of Grants and run 50% of this, now we're taking that 50% away. Are we adding 50% more work to that person's or responsibility?
Well, we...
I think it begs the question, that's all.
Right. That's a fair question. I think that we would have to rework that. Certainly, the focus on social studies, we are trying to put, just like science, typically, there's been a focus on mathematics in ELA. I think that no one can disagree with that. Science has come to the forefront also, and now we're trying to do the same thing with social studies and give it its support. But the grants person, the Title I, we have to look at those, we actually have a meeting set up to look at all of those duties to see where, you know, what needs to happen and if any shifts need to occur.
Yeah, I just think it's fair to wonder, and is that a union position?
Is that what?
A union position?
Well, the director position is, yes, they are FRA positions.
So, when it went to 50% of the social studies, was that bargained with the union?
It hasn't gone to anything. It's a proposed position for, beginning in July 1st.
No, I mean, the one that's been in existence for several years.
That you're talking about, the position that exists now and them doing double duty? I can't speak to that. I'll have to ask Mr. Coogan to speak to that, because that was way before me, but I don't know.
You understand it's a valid question, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, both positions are considered FRA positions, and they both, and that's been doing double duty for at least the last five years, I would say, six years.
So, that person gets 25% more of the pay?
No, it's a split position.
So, if a person has a position, Director of Grants, whatever the title is, Title I, something, whatever it's called, in the union, full-time, and then we add a different position to that, are you saying that the union wouldn't ask for the...
It's my understanding, and this, as I said, this goes back at least five or six years, that the person that's held that position has always been in a dual role, as both the supervisor of the history curriculum or social studies curriculum, as well as the Title I Director.
And if that wasn't the case, you'd think it would be a problem?
If we were doing it like new, fresh out of the gate today, I would say...
Well, if the person was doing the Title I Director position alone, 100% of the time, and then they added the social studies to that after the fact, you would think that would be a problem?
I would say it would be a problem, but it'd be a condition that we'd have to take care of through the contract.
Meaning 25% more of the pay?
Yes, potentially, yes.
Yeah. Madam Superintendent, if you could get us some, just one paragraph on that, because I think it's a valid question, and when you look at the contract, it also says that you're gonna, if you do, if you assume somebody else's role, you're gonna get 25% of the pay. And if we don't, it doesn't, it wouldn't necessarily come to the committee unless we ask questions.
I would agree with you in terms of coverage. I don't think it was set up as coverage. I think it was set up as a dual position. I think that's just, you know, a difference in the way it was done.
Yeah, I'm sure the facts will bear that out, whether it was together or before.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further on curriculum? Hearing none. Custodial Department. Custodial Department, Mr. Pacheco oversees that. Anybody have any questions on the custodial department?
If no one else does, I have some.
Mr. Dragia?
I just wanted to defer if anybody else had a question. So, the question I have, I've been trying to ask this for a while, so we have positions in there, so can you tell me the rank order of, the ranking of positions within the custodial union, as far as custodians?
You have part-time as the lowest, juniors, and seniors.
So, a senior is the highest rank custodial?
The senior is, yes, the senior is the highest rank.
So, one of the things that I've been finding out over the years has been that we give some stipends to different positions for a variety of reasons. So, when I'm looking at the budget, I was trying to find those. I asked the superintendent today to highlight any of those positions, and the one I'd like to focus on, it's called, I believe it's MEO on the, it's a little off-center, but...
It's Senior MEO.
Yep. So, what exactly is that? Because I've been told things, and I'm just trying to get clarity.
There are senior custodians that fill in, I don't know, percentage-wise, we're probably talking about maybe 50% of the time, there are seniors in buildings, acting as seniors, filling in. Sometimes it's short-term, sometimes it may be longer-term. The MEO side is the fact that they're driving a piece of equipment. So, they're driving a vehicle and delivering. Sometimes it's custodial supplies, sometimes it may be dropping off something to nutrition. They could be picking up and delivering salt, items like that.
So...
So, the title itself, to drive a piece of equipment, not a pickup truck, so the box truck, in civil service language is an MEO, a motor equipment operator. And that's where that language came from.
So, in the custodial contract?
Yes.
Where is MEO listed?
It's listed as a Senior MEO. In rank order, there is no rank order. They don't take precedent over anyone else. When they're driving the vehicle and delivering stuff, they're an MEO. When they're working as a senior, they're a senior, equal with all the rest of the seniors.
But the MEO stipend, as I've gotten from the superintendent, is for service out of rank.
The MEO is the fact that they're doing two jobs, as the previous conversation. They're doing two jobs.
So, service out of rank is the language?
The service out of rank is how it was determined, yes.
So, the part that I have a problem and don't understand is that it's two different unions?
No, it's not. They're working in the same union, that's why it was put there.
So, contracts, different contracts?
Same contract.
So, the custodial contract, I'm a custodian.
Yes.
And my rank in my job is the highest within it, where I just asked you that. So, you said that the highest-ranking custodian is called a senior custodian?
Yes.
Which is what this person is?
Yes.
Then, we say on top of that, they're gonna get service out of rank, even though there's no rank in your contract higher than what you have. So, we're gonna slide over to the maintenance contract to give them a stipend?
When the two unions were broken up, I don't know the date on that, the MEO belonged on the maintenance side. The job is not a maintenance job. They're doing nothing to do with maintenance. They're delivering product, changing out snow blowers, lawn mowers, delivering salt. They're not doing maintenance work.
But that's not what my question is. My question is, how does somebody get...
If that was not, if that was, I know what your question is, service out of rank. If it's not service out of rank, we could say 25% of the pay to do a second job, just as we just got done talking about. It's just not, it's, the issue is, is the way the contract was worded, it's not in that way, that particular...
Sure. I would much rather be transparent and have somebody get 25% of a pay than to not put it in a budget, clearly identified as this is what happens, so that the person just gets it. Personally, I would 100% look at that. When you look at the job description for this job, and we just hired a different person for the job, a second person, where in that job description does it say that that position is gonna get $8,000 in service out of rank?
Where does it say it?
Where does it say in the contract, in the job description, that it says that they're gonna get $8,000 more?
The person is doing two jobs.
I understand what you're saying, but if you're looking at it from the angle of, if I'm a senior custodian, how do I know that that person, when that job description comes forth, how do I know that that person's gonna get $8,000 more than me as a senior custodian, when his job description says senior custodian and mine says senior custodian?
Mr. Dragia, I have never, ever, ever met a senior in any of our buildings who is not afraid to ask a question. They also know the history itself of the position, how it came about, and how much it pays. The document is a public document with all these dollars in it, so there is no doubt that they know how much it pays. And those who apply for it are not applying to make a lateral move. They are applying for that job because they know there is a stipend that goes with it. So, that's not a secret. There's no secret whatsoever.
But it's not in the budget listed as such. So, you could say the internal people know it, but if I ask for a copy of the job description, it doesn't say there's an $8,000 stipend. That's for one. Now, we can just agree to disagree, but I just think it's totally wrong. And I brought this to the superintendent to say that it's wrong. Months ago, I also asked for the public record payrolls to figure it out. So, now, if we have a person that, when they fill in for a job, they get service out of rank, would mean, in my mind, if she's a different, a rank than me, and I fill in for her, I get paid that daily rate for that day. That's what I would think. Now, if it was two of us, when I filled in, one of us might get it, one of us might not, depends on who was filling in. That might sound logical to some people, but what sounds illogical to me is that both people get exactly the same exact amount, the same amount every week in their payrolls, exactly the same. That, to me, just says that it's not as needed filling in. That means it's part of their salary. And when I'm looking at it, I, we just went through our contract. I voted against the contract for certain reasons, and this being one of them, is that we just voted for a new contract with maintenance, custodial, and the like, and we haven't straightened this particular piece out. Because if what you're saying is true, that the person, of course, that we're just gonna get the extra pay, then when we negotiated the contract, we should have said, these two positions get 60,000 or whatever the number is instead of 52. We didn't do that for the last contract, we didn't do that for this contract, and they get the same amount every single week. There's a problem here with how this has been made and how the people are getting paid. And when I look at the budget, I asked the question the first day, is it buried within? I don't think stipends like that should be buried within. They should be a separate line item so that the school committee can get truth in advertising and say, that's a stipend that somebody gets. Might be you today, me tomorrow, her the next day, whatever it is. So, I think there's problems with how it's, how this has gone on, how it's been characterized for what they do, what they don't do. In addition to that, I've asked questions about the overtime. How much overtime do the two individuals get that are in that sort of group? The two people work together on the truck. Theoretically, if we're filling in as, you know, overtime or extra time, whatever they're doing, theoretically, we should get similar overtime.
Not really, not really, Mr. ...
We should get some.
Well, they do get some, but some people don't want overtime.
Yeah.
There's a whole bunch of people who work for FNO that do not take any overtime, zero. And then there are some who take a moderate amount, and then there are those who always answer the call.
Yep.
That's just the way it is, and on that truck would be exactly the same situation. Some want it and some don't.
So, what should it get, they should get some if they're doing the job?
They're doing the job.
The two people on a truck, you don't think they should get some?
They're doing the job all the time. They're doing the jo, what do you mean? I can't force overtime.
Some, so they shouldn't get, there shouldn't be things that are needed to work that truck with two people in the department, that both should get overtime, is what you're saying?
So, every single time is overtime?
No, not every single time. I didn't say every single time.
So, it's arbitrary, so that it's a situation that I could say, we're gonna have overtime this week with two people working?
Some. Throughout the year, I would say that there's gonna be cases where both people would get it, would need to get it, based on driving the truck and the like.
If they wanted it, if they wanted it.
Right. And when I look at the payrolls, one person got 21,000, the other one got zero. That begs the question to me, not only about whether you said, because you could want to get more, but it begs the question, how does one person, her and I work the same job on the same truck, I get 21,000, she gets nothing? It doesn't, it just doesn't, it doesn't jive, and I think it calls for us to look into it, you know, a little bit more.
But that person could have refused overtime, Mr. Dragia.
I understand.
They could have not wanted to work.
Every single time.
But they could have.
Just like, it doesn't make sense, that doesn't make sense to me, just like it doesn't make sense that the person gets service out of rank, the exact same amount, the exact same amount, both people, every single week. The same people that were just saying, one guy doesn't want to do overtime, but he got the same service out of rank for every payroll for the entire year. That's not filling in for somebody, that's part of your salary, as far as I'm concerned. If it wasn't, look at the info, it would say, this week I got a little more because I was filling in more. The next week, we're short custodians. So, we're short custodians, we hear that every meeting. We don't have enough seniors, we don't have enough custodians. So, I would think that those people are in, both of those people, not just one, both, were in the buildings as many times as we possibly could because we were so short.
When a senior is out.
Correct. So, that would mean that that would...
So, we only have 16 seniors.
But, okay, so, hear me out. So, if they're gonna get $7,500 a year for service out of rank, but they needed to be in the buildings more, that number would fluctuate. It would have to fluctuate, because that means that they were both only in the buildings exactly the same amount of time each week, because we're not giving it as service out of rank, we're padding somebody's salary with it. It's part of their salary. Otherwise, the number wouldn't be exactly the same. That's what I'm trying to get at. If the number's exactly the same, it's part of their salary. Bring it up in negotiations, put it in the budget so it says what it is. The position gets senior pay, and they get $7,900 in an extra stipend for whatever you want to call it. But to just bury it in, I think that's a problem. Is there any other custodian, I'm looking at the list that we just got now, related to any other type of situations with the service out of rank or other divisions that we just received this info on? Not a part of the contract, like...
There shouldn't be many positions, many situations of service out of rank.
So, if there's two, like, that's only two, there's not any more that are, that...
Not that I can recollect right now.
Yeah. And the, in the custodial ranks, the positions of part-time that we have in the budget?
Yes.
Do those go, how do they get paid? Is that, is that changed in the contract? So, they get a larger pay now, or is it the same hourly rate?
There was an increase, an hourly increase, yes.
So, when we look in the budget, that, whatever it says, 16,000, 18,000, whatever the number is, what would that equate to for hours?
20 hours a week.
Couldn't hear you. 20?
20 hours a week, I'm sorry.
Because those are positions that we needed within the, we need those to fill in, to make the place work properly.
Yes.
And the cafeteria ones is not part of this, right?
No.
So, I'll yield until the caf comes up. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further on custodial? Ms. Pere?
Hi, Mr. Pacheco.
Hi.
So, circling back to what Mr. Dragia was saying, that the stipends seem to appear to be equal. Is it customary that just they're working, and now that stipends, obviously, I'm assuming based on hourly pay? Like hourly, how, how long they're, how many trips they have to take, or how long they're performing at different roles?
I can tell you that, and I'm gonna plead ignorance here, I don't know exactly how it was figured.
Okay.
It's a stipend, so I don't think it equates to the hourly...
So, it'd probably be like the proportion, because you're doing a little bit of another job, which is...
The issue is, is this person comes to work every day, other than possibly having an inside track of knowing at 5:30 or 6 o'clock what they're gonna do that day.
Yeah.
So, they may be working in a building, or they may be doing their truck driver job.
Okay.
And moving stuff. But it's day-to-day.
Okay.
You don't have a lot of advance warning as to what you're doing. So, to, at the time, my guess is, is that when this was negotiated, as it is, as it currently is, it was the fact that it would be a lot more difficult for daily use. On the city side, I did an absolute ton of service out of rank.
Sure.
Truck drivers, laborers, going up to truck drivers, driving sweepers, there was all kinds of stuff. It was a payroll nightmare.
So, you're basically saying this stipend is because they're taking on extra work? And when I look at...
Right. They have two separate jobs.
Right.
And the paid differential is that service out of rank.
Yep.
Not necessarily only when they're going to do one thing or the other. The fact is, they are doing two jobs from day to day, they don't know where the job that they're gonna particularly do. So, they could be a senior at Durfee, they could be a senior at Watson.
Which is technically where their, I should say, expertise lies, right, is doing that job.
They're both custodians, yes.
And that's, I guess, the way I look at out of rank?
Yes.
It is, it is obviously based on leadership too, but I think also out of rank is based on expertise, right?
Yes.
So, if my expertise is maintenance or custodial services or whatever, and I'm the senior at this school, and I'm being pulled to drop off whatever it is you guys are dropping off, that would be not using my maintenance or custodial expertise, so to speak, so hence, out of rank. So, that makes sense to me. Now, when overtime is offered, because we're talking about the overtime budget, and you can't force overtime. And I work in a department that we have, get offered overtime, many people don't take it. However, everyone is offered it. So, my question is, when there is an overtime situation, is it offered to everyone?
So, the, in the custodial ranks, it would be offered to everyone. This particular job is two people.
Right, okay, sure.
So, it's, it's an overtime situation, so for instance, if we had a storm coming in tomorrow, and it was something that was rain, rain, rain until the last couple of days.
Yep.
Maybe we would be delivering salt. Maybe we would be, uh, fueling gas.
Okay. So, the only reason the other custodial team, so to speak, is not, um, getting offered that overtime is because they're not an M.
They're not an MEO, right. They don't have an MEO, mode equipment operator. So, they're, they're not in that job.
Right.
So, they wouldn't be offered that overtime.
So, they wouldn't be offered that position because that's not their job to ride the, uh, these particular.
And if one person is out, the job doesn't get backfilled. So, it stays not filled, and that one person would be doing whatever work they could do on their way.
But, both people are offered it. One doesn't take it, one does, whatever the case may be.
Yes.
Okay. Um, that's really all I have to say. The other thing, and I just kinda did it now too, and I just told, and I'm saying this respectfully, because I just kind of almost did it. We gotta be careful when we're talking about, um, you know, people who are working here and in, in this session, I think we all know what I mean, so. And I just kinda did it myself too, so I'm calling myself out too. Um, but I just hope that we're, we're careful about that going forward. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. I yield.
Anything further on custodial? You got a question? Hearing none? ELL Department?
Mr. Mayor? Sorry, I thought somebody else had their hand raised, but.
Oh, oh, Bobby, did you?
May I?
Yeah.
So, the other issue that I have with the same type of, uh, when we're talking about the each week, what you just said, Mr. Pacheco, to Mrs. Pereira, was that the MEO is a two-person job for the overtime?
No, the MEO is, could be a one-person job. What I'm saying is, is that the overtime is only offered to those two. So, if there's overtime that, for instance, again, we're delivering salt, if it has to be delivered that day, then it's gonna be offered to the two of them. At least one of them is gonna take it. You hope. If it isn't taken by them, then we have to figure out how we're gonna get that salt delivered to each and every building. I use salt, it may be a bad example, because we should know when the storms are gonna hit. But it could be gasoline, it could be a whole bunch of other things. In the summertime, um, delivering fuel to the, to the custodians to cut the grass in each individual building, all of that gets done that way. So, those, there, there's certain responsibilities that they do all the time. They'll also deliver the supplies to help out, um, distribution, so they'll be delivering wax, they'll be delivering paper supplies. If they're going to a building to deliver salt, and they have room on the truck, they would throw other things on there, so it's.
Do you have records of when either of these individuals is filling in for a senior?
Yes, the custodian department should have that. So, I'm sure the supervisor of custodial services would have that.
Yeah. Madam Superintendent, I'd like to ask that you get that to the committee, for the two positions over the last two years, how many times they were filling in as a custodian, just so we can try to, I really wanna make sense of this, because it, it's, it seems like a small thing, but it's such an obvious glaring inconsistency that I have to bring it up. And if it was that they were service out of rank, I think that's bad terminology then, because to me, service out of rank means you get the next level up. If you're a sergeant and a lieutenant, you get the, the service out of rank piece, which is what's listed in the payrolls that I asked for, it says it right out, S O R, whatever the initials are. If it's something that is gonna be part of a salary, all I would ask is that it goes part of the salary, so everyone knows what happens. And if it's not, and it's gonna be when they're filling in, there's no way anybody can tell me that it's exactly the same for both people every single week. It just, it defies any kind of.
Well, that's not the case, that's not the case.
What do you mean?
The service, the service out of rank is, is that stipend, and it's not broken down by when they do it.
Correct, but I'm saying, so that's not truly service out of rank, that's part of their salary. That's what I'm saying. If I'm looking at the budget this year, we just got the notice, seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-four, twenty-five cents for both people. To me, that's not service out of rank when you're doing the MEO work, that's part of your contract, that's part of one particular contract. So, when we negotiate the contract with the custodians union, the maintenance union, whatever union it would be, we would say, they're gonna get this. If we negotiate with the teachers' union, and we have a teacher lead, that teacher lead is negotiated, it's X amount of dollars, that's what they're gonna get. It doesn't just happen to add to their salary. So, all I'm saying is, we, we missed on what it is, and I think we either gotta say, yep, that's what the salary gets, or, or not. Truth in advertising is all I'm asking for, and in the budget, now that we're doing line items, which I, I do appreciate, it should be one, I think, that says seventy-nine, eighty-five, so that when you look at all the seniors, they'll have similar salaries, and then one gets a stipend. When you go to the leads in the other departments, I think the same thing should happen, but I'll talk about that in maintenance. The only other question I had is on overtime in the custodial union on Sundays, is that double time?
Yes.
And how does that get issued? Like, how do?
Most of the time, it's an emergency. Most of the time, it, like, it could be a contractor that's working in the building, and that's the only day we can do it, if it's a shutdown for a boiler or an HVAC system that can be done on, on a, you know, on a Sunday, that's the only things that come to mind.
And somebody would have those records of each time you must have to fill out a form to say, why is it on a Sunday?
We would give permission, that can't be done by anybody else.
Right.
It has to be permissioned, so a supervisor had to grant permission to have any work done.
And, would that have anything to do with needing to be an MEO?
No. No, it all depends on what the, it all depends on what the work is.
So, if it's a, to open a building, for instance, you know, like you said, to let a contractor in, that could be any custodian of the building or whoever, like a, a rotation of?
It could have been a senior, it should have been a senior, can be a senior, if the senior refuses, it would be a junior.
But we would, we'd have records of that.
We would have records of that, yes.
Madam Superintendent, I'd like to ask that we get copies of that as well. With that, I yield.
Hearing nothing further on the custodial department? ELL? ELL, our English language learners, any questions on ELL? Hearing none? Finance department? Any questions on our finance department? Hearing none? Human resources? Anybody have any questions about human resources?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Aguirre?
Thank you, so, uh, I happen to be at a, a training today for my job related to human resources, and, uh, one of my takeaways was that it's a very, uh, involved department, and there's a lot of things that happen with policies, procedures, and the like, and we've had our fair share of, uh, issues with, um, complaints and policies, procedures, and all that stuff. So, one of the things that I would suggest that we look at is, is hiring an outside agency to come in and actually look at all of the policies and procedures that we have. I know we've done that, but I think it's high time for us to have somebody that's very knowledgeable in this, to protect the district, to make sure that we're doing things the proper way, to audit some of our, um, ev-, um, investigations and the like, so that we can get a, a report on whether we're doing it. Are we a high-functioning department relative to this? And I think that's money that I think would be well-spent if we were able to do that in such a way that, uh, they gave us a, a deliverable at the end. Here's the policies that we think are really good, here's where you're lacking, here's where we need to change, or whatever it is, and bring that to the policy subcommittee. If we do it individually, it's gonna be very difficult for us, any of us, to be able to figure it out. I think having an outside person to come in and make sure that we're doing things the right way, um, how do we address things, uh, when somebody has to go on leave, for example? If somebody has to go on paid leave for a reason, there's gotta be a system in place of how everybody gets notice of such. We have professionals that could come in and actually tell us, here's how you, you did it, and here's how you can do it better. And I think I'd ask the superintendent to come back with some sort of recommendation, and if you disagree, I'd come back with that as well, so that we could have that debate. But I think, um, I know I've been dealing with a, a lot of issues, and we've dealt with the issue with the prior superintendent, and I think we, we still have a ways to go to make sure that we're high-functioning. With that, I yield.
Any, anything further for human resources? Hearing none? Insurance? Any questions on our insurance? Next up, parent and community engagement, Title I, early childhood. Does anybody have any questions about those areas related to the budget?
Mr. Mayor, can I go, I, I apologize, I was trying to get to the, the one on insurance, I had one question.
Go ahead.
So, we have listed three hundred thousand for unemployment. Is that for non-renewals? Like, what, is that a number that you feel is a little high, or?
So, we, three hundred thousand's been consistent, year after year, we've used that number. It, it fluctuates, we've had years where, you know, previously, it was like four or five hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, recently, it's more like about two hundred thousand dollars, so we've used three hundred thousand as a placeholder from year to year.
Yeah. So, it's not for people getting laid off, because we're adding hundreds and some positions, it begs the question of.
For, for now, it's most, it's, it's for the non-renewals.
Yeah. And the, the workers' comp salaries, where, where does the money come from if we had a workers' comp claim that we settled, like settlements? Because I know that in the past, years ago, it used to be the city would pay that, and I believe now we're paying it.
We are.
Which is a big difference, could be, hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city used to pay, now we're paying.
Correct.
But where in, I see workers' comp here, but it, and I can see it says salary, but where would that show up?
So, it's a couple areas. So, we do sometimes take money here from the workers' comp line item here, and then we have money that's set aside within the legal, uh, legal services account, that falls under finance, a, a, a small amount of money there.
Yep, and you think that that's sufficient to settle, like?
Hopefully.
I mean, we don't know what we're gonna have, but.
Correct.
So, that, so the only two lines would be where? You said there was one.
So, it's the workers' comp salary line, uh, salary line that's there, if there's any money left over to, there, we use it to cover, to cover settlements. And in the legal services line, it, within my department, we have money in there.
So, the salary one, you would just ask for a transfer to?
Yes.
Thank you, I yield.
Okay, so we did, um, parent and community engagement already. Next grouping is the school committee. That's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions on the school committee?
Mr. Mayor, you had said parent and community, we did, I thought we didn't do that.
We went to that, and then we went back to insurance, because you asked for that one, unless you got a question on parent and community, I don't.
That was from the last meeting that we kept to this one. Right?
No, I did it tonight. If you got a question, though, just like on insurance, you wanna go back, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just had a question on parent and community, that's all, but I didn't know.
Go ahead.
So, in here, it, I, I'm not sure where it shows it. I think there's an open position, like the administrative assistant, that's been open for a few.
She ju, I, I believe that, that just got filled, um, or was in the process of being filled. Ms. Kudo is, uh, was at a conference, and their plane was, um, canceled, so she's like, but they're in the process of hiring.
So, when it's open, it's, it's being filled?
Yes.
In the process, and the one community facilitator, that's the same, it's sort of?
Yes, yes.
It's not a new position that's here, it's just?
No, no.
And do you think that we are paying, or that we have enough money in this account, in this department, to do what we need to do? As far as, was there anything denied? I guess that's a good way to ask it.
There was not. Um, I, I think that the best part about, um, this year, uh, is that we have had funds, so, throughout the year, when people have needed positions, they've come before this body, and we've granted positions. So, um, every single person, uh, at their meeting, I asked that, do you have what you need in order to run the department? So, um, at this time, uh, Ms. Kudo had multiple positions that were filled, that were, uh, she asked for throughout the year, and, and we've, uh, granted those, so.
I know that she's not here, so I can't ask this, but, um, if you could just get us an answer, I know in the past, we had a position that was like, sort of half with the, um, M L L department and that, if you could just get us a one paragraph comment on how that's going.
The community facilitator or the clerk?
The clerk, it was the one that we was, I think we debated whether the person should report to Ms. Kudo or the other, and I'm just curious to see a response to how it's going.
And I can tell you that that person is, um, based out of PACE, and has been working, at PACE, uh, full-time, uh, with Ms. Kudo, so we, I'll get you a write-up on it, but that, that position's been based out of there.
Thank you very much. I yield.
Ms. Rodriks?
Can we just take a look at the early childhood pieces in here as well, that are underpiece?
Sure.
So, I, I'm just kind of commenting, I suppose, on the fact that we have a lot of new pre-K positions that are open, right? It's part of.
Proposed, yes.
Right. But then, I also see a, a significant number of open pre-K positions. So, what does that look like right now? Like, how many kids do we have anticipated coming in? What does that look like, knowing that we have this many pre-K positions that are still open, and then all of these new positions to fill?
Sorry, I'm losing my voice, so bear with me. We don't have a ton that are still open, the ones that are, look open right now are the overflow classrooms that we're trying to figure out because we've hit capacity. And so, our existing classrooms are fully staffed. But we've hit that place where we are at capacity again, and so that's, that's what you see as open right now, and those would be rolled into, um, the expansion for next year.
Do we have an anticipated number of kids that are, are requiring a pre-K placement that haven't gotten one yet?
For this school year? Like, kids that I have on a waitlist right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have about six to eight, um, we've been able to sort of finagle some things around and had some kids move out, we do have six to eight kids right now that are on a waitlist and pending services. Um, we've offered everything we have available as walk-in services, um, while we work to try to open an additional classroom.
Okay. Um, I yield, ma'am.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just, not so much a, a comment, I mean, it is noticeable that we have that many open positions, I know it's for the reason that we're trying to expand, but I'd like to ask the superintendent, I know at the last, uh, Alt Ed, Special Ed Subcommittee, I asked to try to see where early Ed would fit in to a subcommittee, because I think we're gonna have some major expansions and a lot of discussions that need to happen, so I'm just asking if there's any, um, follow-up of that, but I think it's urgent that we do it, so that we now head into the spring, if we're gonna be consistent with, you know, subcommittee work, I think early childhood deserves to be part of, one of them. I'm not saying mine, it can be anybody's, but I do think it's that important.
I, I, I will talk to Ms. Farias, and we'll make a recommendation in the Friday email as to where we think it's, is the right fit for the early childhood, uh, subcommittee.
Fair enough, thank you. I yield.
Next up, we went through the school committee, so next one that we haven't addressed is the security and maintenance department. Any questions on security and maintenance? Mr. Aguirre?
I'm just trying to get to the. So the, looking at security, the, when I see the bills come through, a lot of times it's, it's for a contract of some private entity.
Yes.
And can you explain, one, what that is, why that's needed, and then where is it in the budget for that? And I, I could have missed it, it's just, I'm trying to look here.
So the, the need is, um, at certain times of the day, we have to double up in areas. It's not a full-time piece, but we do have to double up in certain areas, entrances, and at the pace, we have a full-time person working so that we don't use one of our security offices. That's another spot that we would use, the company that's, that's listed. So it's filling in, we do have absenteeism in, like any other group, so we use them to fill in spots that we need to, we push our security people into key areas to make up for somebody who's out, and then we use that particular company as, for lack of a better word, a temp agency to fill in our spots, to be sure that we're staffed every day.
Yeah, um, I'm looking at the budget here, and it's one, two, three, four, five, six. We have 10 open positions and then five new ones. I just recall, within the last, maybe we had mass resignations or something, I'm not sure what, but at one point, maybe early in 2023, I had asked about some of this stuff, and the answer that I got was, we were actually staffed, fully staffed.
We were, and then we, we have had two or three people leave, and then we, we have some old positions that people came in and then didn't like the job two or three weeks and left. So there is a turnover. I wouldn't say all at the end, but there are some people who've been here for a while that have applied for other jobs elsewhere, some of them pay better, which is why they left, and others, they just, it didn't fit, it wasn't a good fit for them.
Yeah, I just, then the, there's a lot of open positions that, and I, to me, that seemed like a inconsistency to what I've been told during the year, you could look back at it, Superintendent, you can look back at it and see whether, you know, what is the goal when you, we add the five? If we were fully staffed, is this to have one security guard in each building? What, what does it look like?
Yeah, so it would, it would be to, to staff up the elementaries so that they would have someone, again, it wouldn't be a situation where we would substitute another, pull another sub, pull another, uh, security person from Durfee. Durfee has the majority of, of the personnel on the security side, the, we have been using security people to help out in certain areas of buildings that we've had issues in, so with that being said, this will fill that last piece of our security detail, so to speak, in the, in the elementaries.
Yeah.
And we're not quite sure how that plays out through the course of the year, so we're not, we already know how it works in the, in the middles and obviously at the high school, but we don't have many at the elementary level.
So what I would ask, and I think you, I'm not sure if you sent this to the, during the reorg piece, but I'm curious to see a visual of what, what the goal would be to look like at the end if we had everybody hired, as well as if we can get some detail on what's happened in what are the open positions? Because, you know, I know it's hard to find people, but it's still not a bad job, and I, I'm not sure that we, but if we're having 10 openings right now, I'm assuming we still have those 10, it doesn't really make a lot of sense when, you know, but maybe we're trying, I don't know, maybe, maybe that's the case, but if you could get us a one-pager on that, I would appreciate it. I, I would say that there's a position called senior, I would say the same thing as I suggested before, that must have a stipend, some additional, that person's paid more than the others, so personally, I would like to see those broken out. And my last question is on the school resource office, is 700,000, can you explain what that, what that is getting us?
So it's everything including the sergeant, all of our offices, including the sergeant, which is, this is the first year we've been paying for the sergeant.
Yep, and this, and this, that includes the benefits, the whole bit, like.
That is what we've been working with, and I'm not sure if it includes a full benefit package, it's what we've paid since we started with the SROs.
You're the boss.
Uh, that, that number is gonna change, Mr. Aguirre, in a meeting today at the school, I haven't even called Kevin, there, there are some benefits that haven't been being counted, pension, I think pension being the big one, they're working on that now, but the number will change a little bit, because they weren't taking out any money for pension payments for those seven. So that's gonna change, I just want to give you a heads up, when you see it, come back, it'll be a different number.
No, I, I totally understand.
Okay.
So sometimes we have debates here where it, it gets to look like, oh, well, you know, some people aren't being fair to the city side and with finances and the like, and I can tell you that this particular one is not one that anybody can blame me for not being fair to the city side on this issue. With that being said, if we're gonna say that we have to be fair and truth in advertising and pay for this, we should pay for the benefits, just like we would do for anybody else, that's only the fair thing to do, and what that's gonna do is actually assist the city on the city side to say that we're gonna take some expenses from, we're gonna pay for some expenses that the city currently has, and that's gonna actually help the city. So it's not always about, let's beat up on the people that are gonna give, you know, the administration a hard time or whatever. All I've asked as one member is that the city pay at least 100% that they have to by law. Along with that, I've also mentioned time and time again that there's some things that we could probably do that can help the city, so it's not a, like, one side versus the other, the issue here is just being consistent and fair with what we do. So when the mayor says that this is gonna be added, I totally support that. What I would say, though, is that I asked this week for when, what are we using for a end of, indirect cost agreement with the city? I asked that, and it's probably, I would guess, some of the reason why there may have been a conversation, I don't know, but at the same time, we have to go back to not forget what we talk about here at these meetings. So in the current year, if I had the current budget here, whatever the mayor just mentioned, with the benefits, the pension, the this, the that, whatever, needs to be taken out of the current year as well, because this thing of starting next year is, I think it's only gonna say we're gonna start next year because we have sat, both the city side and our side, have not been able to, I don't even know how long it takes to rectify it, but would have probably taken one hour, in my opinion, to go back to the current year. So I've been talking about this since 2022, when we first did the budget and we were trying to say whether this should count and that should count, and I asked in the public meeting to have you renegotiate and open it up. So now here we are, it's April, and we're still talking about something that doesn't exist, even though we talked about it back in September, October. So it's not a matter of always trying to hit the city side, but with that being said, we can say all we want, we talked about it, we talked about it, we had a talk, what is the agreement right now that we're operating under, Madam Superintendent?
I shared that with you, you asked me that last week, I emailed it to you in the committee, we are operating under the old agreements, we have met multiple times with the mayor and his team, and we are in the process of revising the indirect cost agreements, they, they had to look at some figures so that we could finalize it, but we, I, what I shared with you is the old one.
I'm not being critical of you at all, I asked you for something and you gave it to me within the hour, I totally get it, I'm not being critical of you. What I am being critical, though, is people need to take this school committee seriously when we vote for things, and I think sometimes that doesn't happen. And here's a case in point, no matter what number you're gonna give right now for, out of the current budget that we have for the schools, I just heard, I think it was either Ms. Pacheco or Mr. Mayor, say that the sergeant is gonna be coming out effective next year. Did I hear that right?
Yes.
Yes, so my point is, we, the school committee, took a vote in public session, not at this school, but in a school committee meeting, to say immediately, I don't know when it was, November, October, immediately, we were gonna count the sergeant to our budget, vote of the committee in full. Let's just suppose that's 100K, probably could be very easily with salary and benefits. So that would mean that this school committee said, we took a vote to take $100,000 that's currently in the police budget and take that on immediately, because I made the motion and I don't know who seconded it, but we voted, immediately to take $100,000 out of the police budget and move it here. What I'm hearing now is that it's gonna start next year.
It's, it started this year, and it started immediate, and, and I'm sorry for the miscommunication, it started this year and we, we started being, we started being charged right at the beginning of the year, after the, after the vote was taken, because that was one of the topics we talked about with the city when we first met with them back in September or October, and I apologize, I'm getting the months confused here, but we agreed to take on the sergeant's salary.
Which is different than I just heard from two people.
It is, and that's, and I'm sorry, that's, that's why I stepped in, we are being charged for it, and that's the plan moving forward, to be charged for the sergeant.
How much is it that we currently have taken out, do you know?
It's, it works out to close to $100,000.
Oh, no, I mean, like this, where I see 700,000 here?
Yep, so that 700,000 is the seven SROs plus the sergeant's salary. Tonight's the first I've heard about the pensions, but that'll be another, another item we discuss moving forward.
Did you say that's the first time you heard of it?
About the pensions, yes.
And you're the CFO?
Yes, sir.
And you've been involved in these meetings?
We just looked at it this afternoon during our budget hearing.
Without him?
No, 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 the city budget, we were looking at the city budget related to police.
You understand what I'm saying, right?
Yes.
Mr. Almeida is the CFO, we've, we've been told, I've been told anyway, that we've been going back and forth on this for seven months. If that's the case, that particular issue should have been rectified seven months ago, so not being critical, Mr. Almeida, all I was asking was, though, maybe you could just get it to us.
Sure.
The current number in the current budget should be close to the 700,000 then, if we take, separate from the benefits piece. Fair to say, right?
And I'll get that for you.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you, anything further? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Ms. Larve.
So, Mr. Kenny Pacheco, I would like to know the difference between a senior safety officer and a regular safety officer, what's the difference? Is it just a stipend?
So the senior is, and, and some of it is training, so they've done some extra training, a stipend, a step, not a stipend. And then they're, they're in charge of a building, so they would be helping out with the assignment of offices and, and things like that.
Okay, any responsibilities of, of doing trainings with the regular safety officers?
Uh, no, that, that would lie on the director, the training would lie on the director, yes.
Okay, so it is just more training and it's a stipend?
Yes.
Or having more training?
Yes.
And it, and it looks as if there's only one in the district, correct?
There's two.
There's two?
Yep.
Must be missing a page.
Yeah, there are two, say.
And where are they housed?
One is at Durfee, one is at RPA, I'm sorry, one is at Durfee, one is at RPA, and one is at Henry Law, there are three.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Mr. Pacheco, I do have one question, how many of these safety officers are first shift, how many second, if you know?
Um, we have.
I mean, if they were full, if this complement was full, how would you divvy this up?
So at Durfee, like, right now, there are two, we would probably up that, we're also, we got a time issue that we are kind of, we still have a lot going on, and there's a change of shift, and we're kind of short at times, so we're thinking about, you know, trying to go back and bargain a change so that we could have a little more of an overlap at the end of school, because the building is, got a lot of students who are still there, and we're running with two security people, especially in the summer when we have people outside, inside, it would be nice to have some extras, so that's something we're working on right now.
How about third shifts?
Um, we had two, we had one officer on third for a while, that didn't work out, so we don't.
Don't, no.
The building is empty as far as people before the second shift custodians leave, we do have a third shift on custodians.
And first shift starts what time for those guys coming in the morning?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Or a little earlier at Durfee, might be 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Ms. Larve.
I have a follow-up, Kenny, um, could you give me an example of some of the trainings that somebody in the senior safety officer position would have?
I couldn't off the top of my head, I, I can tell you that they, that the sheriff's department does a lot of training with our, with our officers, I'm not quite sure the, the added training for the seniors.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, if you could maybe just get us something on that?
Yes, definitely.
I'd appreciate it, thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, just following up on Ms. Larve's con, the budget that we have says there's only one senior safety officer listed. And while you're looking, Mr. Pacheco, what is the process for that, that position?
It would be advertised.
Advertised, interviewed, like?
Right, within the group.
Would we just go by the number, like the?
Meaning?
Meaning the salary, like, so the, the person that's at like 49 or 50 grand is probably, you know, the person that is in that, that ballpark.
There's only one listed, Mr. Pacheco, must be an error.
So I can say to you that there are three.
Yeah, if you could just get it, like, Superintendent can get it to us, it's probably just a salary piece, so security is not a, safety officer is not an easy position, I think, my opinion, so it's a pretty tough job, and they're getting basically a low 40s, 40, 40-some thousand dollars per year for each of those individuals, and I just, when you look at the departments, we, I think we need to look at some equality amongst, like, how much people get paid, and I just wanted to know for the record that a security guard basically is 41, 42 thou, I mean, the open ones are 39, so I don't know if that's first step, is that what that?
Yes.
That's why, so 39,000 for first step, safety officer is the salary, with that I yield.
Ms. Larve.
Other follow-up, so how do you determine where the senior safety officers go now that I know that there's three?
So, so normally, you would have some supervision, some supervisory role as a senior, unless a senior was, unless a person was moved for other reasons throughout the district, that would be the, the criteria, so if you have a situation where you're moving people around a lot, like Durfee, where, where security people would be rotated through the building, you'd want to have someone who has an ability to take care of that, make sure that the rotation is right, third floor, second floor, east, west, depending on how they still lay that building out, lunch duties, things like that. On a smaller building, you may have a situation where there's posts, so they would be posted up at a particular floor, and that senior person would still have their duties, it's not like they're not doing the job, they're still doing their job, they just have some extra duties, some of it is clerical and some of it is actual hands-on.
But they're still in one building, they're not traveling around the district?
The three scene, nobody's traveling right now, right now, it is one of the suggestions that we've talked about.
Is that something that maybe you're, we could see in the future?
Absolutely.
As, okay, that's kind of where I'm leading to.
It may work out well with the elementaries, that that person be rotating through the elementaries, making sure everything is okay, and if, you know, suggesting different things, having a relationship with the principals.
Right, I mean, you, you say they're in a supervisory position, right? That's what you just said, so are they doing any of the, let me call it, not trainings, but when you.
Evaluations?
Yeah, yeah, evaluations, are they doing any evaluations?
So they won't be doing evaluations, they would be assisting whoever that person is, but because they're union members, they wouldn't be evaluating each other. What they would do is, is, as we do with other things, they would help during the evaluation process, certain questions could be asked as to what they feel, strengths, weaknesses, things like that, yes.
All right, I yield, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything further, Ms. Aguirre?
So those positions, do they have a job description?
The seniors?
Seniors.
I think it moves up strictly by the, the stipends, so like, the stipend would dictate the extra role, the extra training they have, and then decide where they would, where they would land. There are people who, I'm sorry?
As far as a job description, so if we were to, if we were to ask, what is the job description for that position of a senior security officer, would we find anything?
I'm not sure if we would, and I haven't looked at it, I can, I can send something to you.
If you could look, and if you don't, please just reply that we don't have one. The other thing I'd like to look for, I always thought that there was one or two, but I could be wrong, and I'm curious to see when we got three.
One was added, one was added this year, was added probably in January.
But it was added how, like through the?
Through the process of, of that particular building, we were having issues in a particular building.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking just more of, when was our vote, if you could check that out to see when the school committee vote was for the?
They didn't, I, I will tell you that now, there's no need for me, the school committee didn't vote to make that person a senior.
So how did they become a senior?
I'm gonna tell you that they were just put as a senior, I, I didn't come to the committee as a vote. That's on me.
Yeah, I just, you might have a good reason, not suggesting you don't, usually you have a good reason, whatever, but once again, I think that the committee needs to, if we have a say, we have a say, we should get the thing, it shouldn't just be added to, you know, three, so Madam Superintendent, if you could put a one-pager together for that, I would appreciate it, thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Thank you, special education department, special education, Ms. Rodriks.
I actually just have a couple of quick questions.
Sure. Sarah, pull your mic down.
Oh, sorry, um, is that better? Okay, so when I'm looking at all of the new special ed teacher positions, right, we have quite a few that are being added.
In the schools?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So when I'm looking at that and then I'm looking at the specific services, like speech, language pathology, and OT, I don't see any increases in there.
Not yet.
So I'm just wondering about that connection, because I'm assuming those kids are accessing speech, OT, and other services as well.
We still have a few SLP positions that should be filled by, I would say, within two weeks, we're in the process of.
That was gonna be my other question.
Yeah, we're in the process of, you know, finalizing the candidates.
People want me to like scream into the microphone.
Sorry, yes, our OT positions are fully staffed.
Yeah, I saw that.
So, yes, I did not ask for additional SLP or OT positions at this time, even PT, because honestly, I need to wrap my head around where we're at with all of these services and how many services. and how many services, if we're fully staffed, are we able to meet the needs of the students? Right now, we are, with the pre-K expansion, that might change. Again, the committee, from what I've observed in the past few months of being here, we could come back down the road and say, you know, after doing a, a more careful analysis, I just don't want to ask for positions without being able to give you a true rationale as to why. Um, I know, I anticipate, I shouldn't say I know, but I anticipate with that pre-K expansion, we will need to think about those, uh, services.
No, I appreciate that, because I was just looking, I mean, it's quite a few self-contained classrooms, and that's a different discussion for a different day.
Yes, yes.
But, as I look at that, you know, typically, those are kids that are going to be receiving additional speech and language. So is that because we have a significant number of, of kids that are going into those settings? I'm just looking at the rationale for why we're opening that many classrooms.
Why we're opening that many pre-K classrooms potentially?
These are specifically-
I mean, kindergarten, yeah.
Special, um, sub-separate classrooms.
Oh, sub-separate classrooms. That's a couple of things. So, yes, there's a, the influx of pre-K coming into kindergarten. Where, and some, some programs are already over what the DESI recommendation is, so we have to work to, um, fix that for next year, even though we notified them and the waiver and all of that piece, right? So some of the classrooms might be at fourteen, and a substantially separate classroom can't go over twelve.
Right.
So for next year, we have to open an additional classroom, even though there's only two extra students, because you can't, I need to divide them up, right? So then, and honestly, when I go into our substantially separate classrooms, a classroom of twelve high-need students, and possibly four adults, it's very cramped.
Yeah.
And so we need to think about that. Twelve is just a very high number, especially for little guys. So that's part of it. The other piece, honestly, is the autism center. Um, we have seen an influx, we probably have had six new students from that center, and not all of them are younger, some of them are, like, in fourth grade. They've had no formal schooling. Um, so, when they come in, those are adding to our, our substantially separate classrooms.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, you said, you referenced the autism center, so you're talking about the community-based autism center that's in, that's in the city?
That's in the city, that families access, you know, through their health insurance, yes.
So typically, the kids can access that until they're about eight years old.
What you would think, but honestly, we have, again, fourth graders. Um, I think fourth grade was probably the oldest that we have had so far, coming directly from there.
Yeah, so out in that world, you know, eight seems to be the cutoff, but that's not to say that it wouldn't get covered for kids older than that, and so we have those kids that are coming in.
From the families, is there now, because it's insurance-based, and they can't find providers either, they just cancel the student's program for the day, so now they want them in school. So that's why, again, I'm, you know, um, actually, Henry Law has had, uh, you know, a significant increase with those students.
I'm just trying to wrap my brain around that, but again, that's a different conversation for a, a different-
I agree.
That's a whole other conversation for that. Um, those two SLP positions that are currently open, have they been open for a long time?
One of is our, one of them is our bilingual position, um, but we do have a candidate who is fluent in Portuguese, um, so that will help with some of our bilingual evaluations. And the other one, they've been open since before I got here, so I'm not exactly sure how long, but, um-
And then, the two open team chairs, because I noticed that we're looking to move to twenty?
We actually failed those positions, the open ones. We had a staff member who left, who actually came back, so-
So I was just noticing that we're moving to twenty, and it looks like you're making a lot of moves, and it sounds like what you're, in a, in a good way, and it sounds like what you're trying to do is really sort of streamline, and also sort of take the load off for folks, so that way we can-
Efficiency, right, to be, you know, my three priorities are compliance, programming, and instruction, and our team chairs play a huge role in our compliance piece. And when I look at, um, their, the size of their caseloads, and the work that they have to do with those caseloads, that's, the compliance is where I see that we can, uh, do better, and we need to do better by not, because we don't have great staff, the staff are working triple time. Um, you just can't keep up with all the regulations, and all the timelines and paperwork when you're stretched, uh, stretched too thin, so that's why. To bring their caseload numbers overall down, to make sure that they can fulfill the responsibilities of their role, um, and do that effectively, and make them feel like they're effective, because right now, it feels like, people feel like they're putting out fires a lot of the time.
Right, it just feels like you're treading water when you're doing that all the time, and, and that was sort of the rationale for asking that question between, because we have a significant number of new teacher positions, but not, i- it wasn't comparable on the service delivery side.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
And so that's why I was looking at that, saying like, how are we in compliance? If we have this many kids that are coming in, odds are they're going to require that level of specialty service, and then what do we do? How do we manage that? But I appreciate the fact that you want to kind of wrap your head around what's going on, um, and that answered my question, so with that, I yield.
Anything further of a special ed? Mr. Aguirre?
Thank you. So, uh, once again, the lead psychologist is in here, it's all bundled up, I would recommend that it get separated out, so that we know that there's a lead position with X dollars. I think that truth in advertising would, would be the best way to go. You know, I talked the other day about the inclusion teachers, and we're going to be working on that, but as I look at the budget, and I look at the positions, I look at the needs in the special education department, I think overall, if you just took the whole, what we spend on special education, I personally don't think we're spending nearly enough money on it. I don't have all the answers on what particular positions, but you can look at it and say, how much are we spending for this? What do other districts spend? What, I think we're underfunded in special education, just my, my gut telling me, I guess. Um, but at the same time, I also hear what you're saying about all the things we talked about at the special ed subcommittee. You brought forward a bunch of job descriptions, uh, for trying to rework things that actually makes sense, I a hundred percent agree with that. So I'm looking forward to next Monday, voting on all those, because that needs to happen now, not in May, June, and July. It needs to happen now, so I'm looking forward to that, but I think you're totally on the right track with what you're doing. What I will say, and I've said this in other places, and I believe that in the structure of your organization in the special ed department, that you need a, an assistant that actually has a, a non-union, not any union, not just, just in general, just like your position, and I've seen in smaller districts, they have a special education director and an assistant special education director, because that takes the burden off of a lot of different things, and sh- short and quick, you're going to be burnt out quick, and go in here and go in there. So I can tell you from my vote, my one vote, would be that if you bring forward, or superintendent brings forward, an assistant superintendent under you, we've had those positions in the past, called various things. I personally would think that that's an important piece, to put all the pieces that you're trying to do together, and to give you some assistance. So I will commit to that today, and I will vote for that in a heartbeat, if it comes forward, and, um, I, I do think you're trying your best, if there's, there's a lot of issues, but keep up the good work, I think we're, we're on the right track with a lot of things. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Next one, sorry, guys. Next up, Student Services Department. Anything on student services? Hearing, not, Ms. Rodriks?
Just a quick question about that. Am I wrong in saying that the SEL integration specialist position has been open for quite a while?
They just, um, we actually just processed a, um, uh, recommendation for hire.
Okay, all right, I yield.
Anything for, Mr. Aguirre?
So we talk a lot about attendance, um, policy, and attendance officers, and, and the like. I think, I mentioned this about the resiliency alternative school. One of the things I think we're lacking is having attendance officers that work hours different than the normal school day. So, I do think that we have a sufficient number, but we also have people locked into the time that they work. I'd like to propose that if we are going to add one, which I think we should for almost a, a split shift, so we have someone working after hours, supper time, knocking on doors, getting the families together. Um, I know we have different positions called different things, but, uh, personally, I think with the attendance being as bad as it is and the needs, we haven't tried everything. We're trying things. I think one thing that we could try is having a second shift, or, you know, split shift person, so that they can work through the hours of supper time, trying to get people when they're, when they're home. So I, as one member, I would support something like that. I probably wouldn't support it if it was just during the day, and, um, I know we talked about the attendance officers going to the schools, and if we could just get up one paragraph in one of the emails, just to say how that's going.
Yep.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Superintendent's budget? Anything on the superintendent's budget? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Australia?
I see the one that's open, I'm assuming that's getting filled as well?
Yes.
So you're, you're not going to have any open positions other than the grant writer? Is that because the city?
Yes, have, split with the city.
So, jogging my memory, I believe that's in here as thirty-three thousand, but jogging my memory, I think last year, the city said they were paying the whole thing? Has that been a change now?
We did, we, um, obviously, we lost our grant writer, Mr. DiBacio moved to Florida. We just brought a young lady on, even for less than that, so we were going to give her a trial run to the end of the year and come back to the schools. So we're at a holding pattern on that right now, because she just started, and she's making a heck of a lot, less than that.
No, all I'm saying is the money. So last year, we took the money out of our budget, and the city said they were funding the whole thing. If I'm seeing this in the budget, that would mean to me that somebody told Mr. Almeida that we needed to put in certain amount of number for, so now we're, we're going back to paying half?
Yes.
And I'm not wrong that we were told that we're not paying half the last time.
No, you're not.
Yeah, so, I was against that at the time, I thought we should have paid half, that's what it is, we're using it half-time, we should pay half. So I'm glad that it's in here, but if I was to look at that number, and you said it's even less than that?
Well, she just started, Kevin, she didn't do anything-
No, I'm just saying, like, if you're, if, for the edification of anybody, it says thirty-three thousand dollars, here. Thirty-three thousand, if half of that is sixty-six thousand. So if it's less than that, that means we hired a grant writer in a city with X amount of dollars, X amount of people, and all we need, for fifty-five thousand. I hope that she's very good, uh, but part of the thing is, we have to pay in order to get qualified people to do this stuff. So I don't think that's enough money, but, good luck, Mr. Mayor, with that. Thank you, I yield.
I really, I appreciate your concern, Mr. Aguirre, thank you for helping.
Anytime.
Next, next up, Technology Department. Anything on technology? Mr. Aguirre?
It says new position, Director of Technology Infrastructure, is that just because it's, is that one of those, uh, in the group that came before the subcommittee? That, that's not filled, is that what that is?
Uh, no, we've had this position in the past, we didn't have it last budget cycle, um, and bringing it back to the committee, because there's just a need in that silo of technology. Right now, I'm basically filling that role and trying to do, you know, CIO duties, um, so we're looking to bring that position back to oversee the break-fix side, um, to give them more of a day-to-day direction, um, so I'm not split in two different places.
Who was the last person that you said we didn't fill? I don't recall that.
No, the, the position, we phased out in last budget cycle, because I saw a need to try to, to separate a position and create silos for network, and then VoIP infrastructure. But right now, that department, I'm there in the morning to try to get, you know, people set up, and then back and forth between the two buildings, and I'm looking to bring back the director position, so that there's supervision of that staff on the break-fix side on a daily basis, so that there's someone there every day.
Yeah, so, I pay attention at the subcommittee meetings, and this has never been brought to the subcommittee at all. So that's one of my first concerns. My second concern is, what, how we do things in this district, in my opinion sometimes, is that we go in any given year, we say, we're not going to fill this position, because we need you to create these two positions. And then, we create those two positions, and we forget to eliminate the other one. Then we come back, and I'm not saying this is the case here, but I, I've seen this across the district, then we come back and say, oh, by the way, we want to fill that position now. And why I'm asking that question to the subcommittee is so that we can get through the details of these things, so that we can, I vote at the subcommittee and the full committee based on information that I'm given, and then to, to add another one-
So, Mr. Aguirre, during the subcommittee meeting, we hadn't had a chance to sit down for my budget, you know, meeting with the superintendent, with the CFO, and this came out of that, after our subcommittee meeting, I would have definitely brought it to the committee at that time, but this was in preparation for our budget moving forward, and it was done at their meeting, and that's why it's here now.
Right, so, I think, I think my point's pretty clear. If we do that, it should be like a proposed position, that we're going to bring to the subcommittee, before it just comes in here as a new position, at another administrative position, you know, you might have the need for it, I, I don't know, but there's a better timing, and there's a better way to do it, I think, than putting it in the budget and just say, oh, that's a new position. That's just, that's just my, um-
I, I guess I need some clarification, because the, some of the new positions that we're proposing in this budget for next year, um, have not gone, like, I'm thinking about the social studies, um, director that we're bringing forth, right? I didn't bring that position to the instructional subcommittee. I, I hear what you're saying, but I think that this is the proposed budget, and that's what Mr., as we met with each department, that's what Mr. Cabral proposed. I get that it was an old position, um, which is why, um, I think that, why you're questioning it, but every single position in here, in this proposed budget, has not gone through a subcommittee for approval first.
Yep, and that doesn't mean that it shouldn't.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
That's all I'm saying, so, this is a proposed budget, so-
Right.
The purpose of subcommittees, if we're going to do it properly, is to vet each issue, to get into details about it. When we do it at a budget presentation, when there's a hundred and seventy-eight new positions, and all kinds of things going on, it's much more difficult than at a subcommittee and say, here's what we'd like to do for this, that, and the other thing. So, we have the money, we have, but if we're going to do subcommittees, we should do them the right way, and even if now, this budget doesn't need to be approved today, so we should be having subcommittee meetings for any new positions in any department, where we could go through this. It, it's just not a good system, in my opinion. When we take a position, and, this is going to come up again, with other positions, so when we take a position and say, we're going to remove, whether it's in a union contract or not, and you know the situations I'm talking about, and we say, we're going to give this young lady an increase, and a different job that's going to take my position, my old position, out, we don't get rid of it, we keep it in abeyance, and then when it's convenient, we just bring it back, and with no vote of this committee. So that's the problem that I have, is that when we eliminated the director of Technology Infrastructure position, it was for a reason, because we didn't need it at the time, we didn't think we needed, whatever it is, that position is gone, as far as I'm concerned. That position doesn't just sit there and say, well, when we want to fill it, we'll fill it. Same thing happens in a school. We've had situations, I'm not going to, uh, one person's a department head, I don't need a department head, I'm going to do the job. Then I do the job, next year, guess what happens? Oh, by the way, I want that department head job. So, I'm not bringing something up that doesn't make sense, we have to, if we're going to do subcommittees, do them, and I would say that we should have had some of these discussions at more of them, rather than, like, if I didn't look at this line-item budget, like I'm doing right now, I'm the chairman of the Technology Subcommittee meeting, and I would have had no idea that we were adding a hundred and, whatever, a hundred thousand dollar position to the department. If I didn't look at this line by line and try to figure it out under the new, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be that way. It should be highlighted that this is what we're going to do, and I think myself and the subcommittee's been very supportive of your organization, and trying to help with things, but, so it's not a criticism of you, but it's just frustrating to me when we get to the point where we have this. the point where we have this. We've added a lot of positions and, you know? My question is, separate from this, where is the amount of money for Power School?
It's been being funded out of ESER to this point.
But where is it in the next budget? It's in ESER budget?
Yes, for one more year.
Okay. And how much is it and when does it run out?
Current contract will run out last week of July. In the process right now of acquiring new pricing from Power School as we speak, they usually give it to you the first couple of weeks of April with a lot of those other contracts. So we'll be seeing those numbers come in in the next week or so.
So we're not, we're not bound to that program more than July?
Correct.
I don't remember when we hired, when we booked it.
Our current contract will end on July 30th. And I'm in the process now of reviewing everything. We're looking at, you know, what stakeholders are seeing, what end users are seeing, and we'll be putting together something more formal, whether or not you want to discuss it in a, you know, Technology Subcommittee meeting first, moving forward. But I should hopefully have all of that information in the next few weeks.
How much is encumbered in ESER? How much? Roughly. It doesn't have to be exact.
Just over 200,000 at this time?
And how much is it going to cost to run it next year?
I haven't seen everything yet, but probably just over, somewhere around 200,000.
Next year?
Yes, sir.
But we don't have a quote yet? Is that what?
No.
Right. So you know my concerns about that program. I think time is of the essence. If you want to have a subcommittee, you want to have a full committee, I'd probably recommend a full committee because we would end up having the same debate twice, would be my guess, related to that, but...
And just, and just so that we get all of the information, full transparent, and I have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed, it will not be ready for this, you know, April 10th meeting because they're still, you know, getting their quotations ready. And I'd like to have a little bit more data and do some more research on our end before we make a full decision as a senior staff.
Sure. I would say, I wouldn't expect, personally, I wouldn't expect that in a week. But I think we have to make a commitment to the next meeting for sure.
Correct.
And if we look at it, we need to be, I brought out last meeting that $100,000 increases and all that stuff. I would expect that to be in the one pager of what is the real number because the way I see it, even at 200,000, we were paying 50,000. So that's four times as much as what we were getting before. And I think we need to, we need to really look at it. My last question on that is when I had asked for some stuff to be on the last agenda, it was stated that there was going to be a survey done and that was weeks and weeks ago. Any updates?
So, so there was an initial survey put together and I sat down and looked at it. It's being redone because I didn't necessarily like the way the questions, they left a ton of interpretation. So I wanted a more pointed survey. The superintendent, the assistant superintendent, I have been sitting down the last few days. We have a draft of a survey that'll be discussed tomorrow at our senior staff meeting and then it will be sent out. We were looking to create a survey that had a little more logic in it. So, you know, for example, if you were a building-based administrator, you would click that as your choice. It would give you a set of certain questions so that it wasn't, what I didn't want to do is send out seven different types of surveys for all the end users using the software. And the draft surveys, they basically did that. They were asking the same questions to everyone. And, you know, to do this correctly and to give us a good data set so that we can make a decision, an informed decision moving forward, we decided to clean the survey up and do some logic so that it would dump the people into certain sets of questions and then the data would be a little bit easier to follow.
Now, I understand. The request that I had made at the time didn't say we needed to survey everyone. The request that I made, trying to make an educated decision, was to survey the principals and see what they said.
I, but I'm the one who withheld that because I think that we, just like when we implement anything new, we have had these discussions and we want to get data, not only from the principals, we want anyone that uses Power School and how they use it. We want to make sure, we also want to make an informed decision. I think that your concerns are some of our concerns also. And we want to make sure we have all of the information in front of us before we come to you with the recommendation as well as results in regards to where we stand.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that. Just, I'm frustrated because I sat here and watched how we switched from one to the other. That was very, very, very top-heavy from central administration, putting the pressure on people to vote a certain way. We all know it, whether we want to admit it or not, we all know what really the story was. It came from the top that said, we want to get rid of it, and there was ulterior motives. Why? So people came before us and said, no, you know, I think it's, it could be okay, it could be okay, and all this stuff. It was because it came from the top. We all know it, just admit it. So that's part of my frustration, is that we, we were sold a bill of goods. I know it. I feel it. I hear it. And I think it's unbelievable as far as what's going on. The only thing I would ask is if Mr. Cabral or Madam Superintendent, if you could please share the clip of the video with the full school committee again, so we get notice of what we, what we were promised by the folks there. So as we start to look into it, we should get to at least go back and see. That would help us. With that, I yield.
Anything further on technology? Hearing nothing? Transportation?
Transportation.
Anything on transportation? Hearing nothing?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre.
Can we get an update on the, I know we advertised for a director. We had some discussions and where are we at with that at current?
Mr. Pacheco.
So the offer was made. The conversation was that the offer, along with the current salary, was not acceptable. With all due respect, was exactly the way it was said and I respect that. The current person who does the job, the salary is very low. And the person who was interested in the job felt that, that the current salary of the person is low and the offer that we made them obviously was lower than that. So they weren't interested. And that's where we stand right now.
So who's the day-to-day operations director?
Right here. Me. I am.
Oh, right.
With the, in the absence of a director, I'm assuming those roles.
Yep. I, I've said this to you, Mr. Pacheco, many times already in public meetings, and I think that your spread, your position is spread way too thin. And then it becomes to not being able to do all of those things. So I'm going to say that again here. You can't be running the day-to-day operations. And you can try, but you can't do the needs of that department justice doing that. So when I'm looking at this budget, it says here 51, $50,600 for the, I think the person who was doing it. What are they getting paid additional for doing extra work? Are they getting the 25% pay? What is the differential?
It comes out to just about that, yes.
So at that point, if it was a year-round thing...
There would still not be enough money.
No, but what I'm saying is, if, if I'm looking at the position of 56, 50,600 and 25% of that, if it was a year, would be 13,000. So that would take the salary up to 63, 64,000.
Which is more than the directors being paid, which is more than the coordinators being paid right now.
We have the coordinator here at 69. But the moral of the story is, I'm not being critical of the situation, but we need a technology director.
Transportation.
A transportation director. Yeah, we need a technology one. We got a good one. It's okay. So the issue is, though, we, we voted for a certain number based on the job description and they're coming in at the low end. What we just heard here is that the person that's currently doing, or was doing it, I guess now is not the case, was actually making more money than we offered the person. Never mind taking the job on, you know? We offered a number, this committee, that was less than the person was actually making. I don't understand.
That's not accurate.
But that, but the issue is, is those funds are not, wouldn't be available. So this obviously is a projection for next year. So it's not the same. Those projections in front of you are not their salary current. It's projections.
So what would, what would the person that was doing the job interim get?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. 51, maybe?
I mean, it's only 50,600 here.
So it probably would be in the 40s.
Yeah. Madam Superintendent, so my point is, and I'm not trying to pick on Mr. Pacheco here, but just hear me through. If we had a person who's a clerical person, chief clerk, whatever they call it, that was making for round numbers 50,000, we put that person in, not as an actual position, we just say, you're going to do the duties of the transportation director. They were going to get the equivalent of 25% of their pay, which I believe should be the standard because some unions have that. That would mean that that person's 50,000 would be 63,000 or 62,000. If that was the case, when we negotiated to say, what are we going to offer, why in the heck would we offer 55?
I, I believe Mr. Krugan is saying that that's not accurate, right?
It's not because we were sharing, so the two clerks in that, in that particular department are sharing the duties. So they're both working for extra dollars to keep the wheels on the bus, excuse the point. But it's not one person doing that work. When we advertise for an interim, one person, one of the two apply.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yeah, I understand. Madam Superintendent, so under that scenario, we have two people making half of 12,000. That means we had one person making 6,000 extra and the other person making 6,000 extra. We advertised the job interim. The interim person was going to now assume all the duties of that director. Wouldn't it logically say that that person was now going to get the other six to go back on top at a minimum to be at 62,000 and we offered 55?
And, and as I said, Ms. Aguirre, the 62 was not acceptable either.
I understand, but this committee only offered 55. So how did we offer 62? What if we said, if that was the case, why, why do we offer 55? If you can just give us 62, 65, 70, why would we have to have taken a vote for 55? So all I'm saying is, I think the importance of this position is we need a position. We need a person in that role. And all I was asking is trying to look at the logic of these numbers. You can get us the exact figures because you have access to the payrolls. But if we were going to pay the 6,000 twice, wouldn't we start at a floor of the 12,000 on top of their salary? It's just, I really just think that we need to, we need to look at that. All of the money that comes out of the, on this line adds up to 10,200. And we've been quoted at like 11 for transportation. Is there something missing that I'm not seeing here?
This is right here.
Right at the bottom, Kevin.
Total projected 12,800.
12,800.
But, but I, that's less money that was, that we don't have a say in. Right?
I'm sorry?
So I'm trying to figure out what is the actual amount, not so much that is on the city side. So we had talked about, the mayor had brought up about the 11 million thing and all that stuff. So I'm, I'm using that there was, had to have been discussion about, we needed 11 million if that was part of their thing. So this says 10 million, but we were talking 11 million. What is the real number?
The real number is 12.8 million. That's the number for next year that I've got, that I've got factored in. I, I'm trying to be nice to the city, so to speak. And if you see the breakdown below, you'll see that I am projecting to spend 1.5 million out of Circuit Breaker for next year for out-of-district transportation, 800,000 out of ESER 3 for preschool transportation, and 500,000 from McKinny Vento to give you a total for 10 million. So the total transportation is 12.8 million next year. But 10 million of it is coming out of the operating budget.
Okay. I guess it's good that I ask questions because then you find out the real story. So I guess from reading this, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. The administration in the schools, without a vote of the school committee, chose to spend 1.5 million towards transportation, that we've never spent like that before. Am I wrong?
I'm bringing it to your attention through the budget, yes.
I couldn't hear you. Can you please speak into the mic?
Absolutely. I'm bringing it to your attention through the budget, yes.
Oh. So that doesn't need to be highlighted.
I...
So I'm not looking for you, Mr. Almeida. You can only do what you're told to do. I get it. But Madam Superintendent, if I didn't ask this question right now, how was this school committee going to know as a body that we were deciding to take 1.5 million out of Circuit Breaker funds and pay for transportation with it? How would we know, Madam Superintendent? How would we know?
We would be notifying you. We knew that we were going to have this discussion tonight. But we will put it in writing to you.
Yeah. Please do.
Mm-hmm.
I can give you my opinion. My opinion is that was underhanded. It was not appropriate. And it was, it was just, I can't even tell you how flabbergasted I am that that even showed up in here. And for any member of this committee to just sit here and think that that's okay, you got to look in the mirror. Because what, two meetings ago, three meetings ago, I've heard from members of this committee, I've heard from other people saying, how the heck are we going to spend? How are we going to pay for all these new positions? 150 positions, 170 positions, to the tune of 6 million in ESER funds according to this budget? How are we going to pay for it? And I've said to members of this committee, members of the public, anybody that asks, I said, well, two meetings ago, I asked Mr. Almeida how much money we had in the Circuit Breaker account, like a bank check, like a, a bankbook. You told me 3 million. So I've been taking votes and I would assume, because everybody else heard that same story, that we can, we know we can cover it because we've got 3 million in our account over here. Now, just by asking questions, I find out that half of that bank checkbook or whatever you want to call it, account, is going to be gone because we're going to spend it right here in the Circuit Breaker fund. And we're going to slide that in and hope that we pass this budget and call it a day. Nobody was going to bring that up today. Nobody. Because if that was the case, it should have been presented when we did this part of the budget. When the mayor asked, does anybody have anything in transportation? Somebody in administration said, I just want to let you know, there's a big number in here and we're taking 1.5 million out of your fund, school committee, and we're going to spend it towards transportation. That didn't happen and that's a shame. And the same thing, I don't know what this ESER 3 preschool, where does that come from? Just because we wanted to get to 10 million?
No.
Where, where does that come from?
So, Mr. Aguirre, you know, I'm always very fair to the city. I'm very fair to the schools. I try to do things appropriately. I did delineate how the 10 million was coming about for the budget. So if I didn't clearly say it, I apologize, but it's in all of the documents that everyone got here on, at the school, for the school committee. So if I need to be clearer in the future, I will be. I'll make that point. But these numbers are all estimates. Preschool has, the preschool budget for transportation has increased. We've grown. It's increased. I budgeted, when I budgeted for the ESER grant, ESER 3 in particular, I budgeted transportation out of there. And so that was all intentioned for preschool transportation, for the increased preschool. And so that's why these numbers are the way that they are. The number for McKinny Vento, it's a conservative number, but that's based on the reimbursement that we received last year. That's the 500,000 that you see there. The million five for out-of-district is roundabouts what we pay, what we're going to pay, what, what we are paying this year for out-of-district. I do anticipate it will increase a little bit, but that's, that's what the number is there, the 1.5 million. The 800,000, that's a good number, good estimate for what we have. So that's how you come to the 10 million.
It doesn't, there's no way anyone can say that sliding in 1.5 million, the way this went, is okay. It's a slap in the face to the school committee. Maybe everybody else knew. Maybe, I don't know. Maybe everybody else knew. But all I know is what I asked here at this public meeting, that you said there was 3 million in an account and I've been taking votes and telling people otherwise. So we were going to slide in, whether, whether I asked the question or not, we just felt like, oh, we're going to slide it in? That's not okay. That is not okay. It's not okay by this member. If anybody else thinks it's okay, then please speak up. Because as far as I'm concerned, that is not okay. We need to take the school funds and be able to fund these positions going forward, hundreds of positions. And we can't do that when one meeting we're told we got 3 million in the bank and then all of a sudden we lost 1.5 million without anybody telling us. It's just not okay. It's not the right thing to do. It's unbelievable. I don't understand how anybody can even, even try to do this and say that we're being fair and transparent to the school committee. If I didn't ask this question, we would have voted and we wouldn't even have known it. And when I ask questions, people look around like, oh, is he going to ask another question? Damn right. Look at what just happened here. We wouldn't have known you're taking 1.5 million out of our savings account to, sent to the city to pay for transportation. We wouldn't have known it. We wouldn't have known it.
To be clear, Mr. Agar, the information is in your budget binder. I apologize that it wasn't said out in public. If you want me to say it, it's said right now. I could just as happily take the money away and let the city pay the additional million and a half, if that's what you would like.
I understand, sir. But we had a debate here. We, this school committee had a debate just the other day.
Kev, Kev, Kev.
We had a debate just the other day. Excuse me, I have a chance to talk.
No, no, you're yelling.
We have, we had a debate here. We had a debate here the other day, this full committee, about something that the mayor presented to try to take eleven million dollars off of the school department. We had this debate. You stood there and sent silent about this one-point-five million. Superintendent, the same thing. If you didn't know and think that this was going to be an issue, that was going to be tough, that was going to be a big decision, whatever it is, obviously, you weren't thinking, and you guys as a senior leadership team didn't think about it. Because somebody in that senior leadership, when you're all together, should have said, you know, I think we should tell the school committee before we present this budget. And once again, I, I mentioned the other day, we got this budget at five o'clock the other, right on the spot. So I've been trying to do my research along the way, but one-point-five million for transportation out of our checking, checking account, that we could have used for services, for special edders I just talked about, and all this other stuff, to slide it in, it just, it just was not and is not okay. It's just unbelievable how this even got to this point. And you're up there, Mr. Almeida, this issue falls on the superintendent, in my opinion, because she's the leader of this district. And, and if I was mad at you, I apologize. My concern is that I just didn't like the way it was handled, and I don't think it's, we can't in one breath say one thing, and then next week say another. It's just not okay. With that I yield.
Okay. I will take responsibility for it. I mean, it's not, Kevin, yes, you're right, I'm the superintendent, I take responsibility. We will, we will have a discussion about taking the million and a half and putting it towards filling the positions. There was no intention to slide anything. You know we've been very transparent with everything that we do. So, yes, you want, you, you want to beat up on someone, that'll be me.
No, I, I gotta, I gotta be clear on this. Obviously, when I, when we talked about helping the school transportation, or helping the city by funding the school transportation, Jay Sullivan explained to me that the Circuit Breaker Fund leftover surplus was the only place you could carry money over to the city. Now, this showed up, you know, honest, honestly, it is a help to the city of Fall River. I don't believe for one second that we're going to be cutting any positions or not funding positions because that one-point-eight, one-point-five million, I, you know, I don't want to make it sound like I'm a saint or something, but I really didn't get involved with this, but I really do support it. I think helping the, helping the city with transportation in a fund that, as the DESE explained to me, was one of the areas you could carry money over in, and the ESER and McKinny Vento is a reimbursement anyway, so as far as I'm concerned, it's a good thing for the city. It's part of the fairness that you talked about earlier when we were talking about the pension costs. So at the same time, this is another area that can, that can help the city. I mean, if, if, if that's what we're looking to do, it's one city budget, the school's a part of it. I don't think there's anything wrong with this. I mean, I'm glad that there is a little bit of net school spending allowable in this budget, two-hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Almeida, is that, is that the athletics part we had talked about?
Yes.
So that's two-hundred thousand, okay. So there is some benefit for the city. I think helping the city in a time like this is not a bad thing. I don't believe for a second, I think Mr. Mr. Agar is well aware of the finances in the school department, and there's nobody going to be getting any cuts of one-point-five million. It's one of those funds that can be carried over from the DESE, so I support it. But, you know, whatever happens, happens. It's going to go forward, we're going to vote on the budget. I'm not in the business of beating people up. I think Mr. Almeida does a good job, so I will not be raising my voice. But at the same time, I do, to a point, agree with Mr. Agar, that that should have been a paper that went out to him earlier as a notice. We could have had a debate, but as far as I'm concerned, it's a benefit for the city, and, you know, it's obviously about ten percent of that budget, so it does help us, and I appreciate it. I'll leave it at that. And again, I, I have no problem, Mr. Agar, pointing out, the only thing I was trying to point out was the volume. As long as we talk respectfully, we're a much better committee. Ms. Rodericks.
So I'm, I'm not even going to get into whether I agree with spending that money or not spending that money. There are a lot of things that I know a lot about, right? And so I ask questions, and when I look through information, I can make sense of it better because there are things I'm very familiar with, and I feel really confident. But I rely on the fact that we have other members on this committee that have other areas of expertise. This happens to be one that Mr. Agar has more information about than I do, and so I wouldn't have caught that had that question not been asked, because I wouldn't have realized that that's not something that we've done before, right? That that's not a piece that we've pulled out. And somebody said, like, that's not money that we've spent before in order to support transportation. So I, for one, appreciate the fact that those questions are being asked, because again, there's a lot of things that I know about, and there's a lot of things that I rely on everybody else here to ask questions about, because I don't have the answers to them. So that's the only comment that I'm going to make about that, and the fact that it does, like, once this is all sort of presented, it does, it's not highlighted anywhere, it's something that we haven't done before. And so as somebody who is newer to this position, I'd appreciate that being highlighted. And that's all I'm going to say about that with that I yield.
Anything further, Mr. Agar?
I'll, I'll, if anybody else wants to speak, I already spoke, so nobody else wants to speak, I'd like to floor.
Mr. Agar.
So part of the concern is that we, we don't have the information. So now I'm hearing that we had Jay Sullivan said something about the, who works for DESE. Ms. Almeida, are you aware of that?
Oh, no, Mr. Mr. Agar, can I make this clear?
Absolutely.
When the eleven million was being debated, is when I talked to Jay Sullivan. He told me Circuit Breaker money can be carried over. Obviously, it, it, you know as much about it as me. City departments have turnbacks. There's no turnbacks in the school department. The only area where a turnback is allowed, and I'm going to ask Mr. Almeida to make sure I'm saying this right, the only area Jay Sullivan said there are turnbacks allowed is the Circuit Breaker funds. Am I right or wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what he told me during the eleven million debate. I did not call him about this part of it here.
Correct.
And I was saying, he goes, Paul, he said, Paul, you should be able to get money back out of Circuit Breaker. I said, well, I've never heard that, Jay. I called Mr. Almeida, he said, that's the only area where you're allowed a turnback. Other, other monies left in the budget, go on.
Can any money be turned back to the city without a vote of the school committee?
No.
Was this money brought to the school committee?
No.
That's my point. So when we talk about Circuit Breaker money, as I mentioned last month, it's sort of a, a, a bank, a bankbook that has three million dollars in it. So what the mayor's talking about is, because we have been fiscally prudent, as the money comes back in, in the old days, let me take it back to when we didn't have any money. The entire amount of Circuit Breaker money, which is three million dollars apparently, right, that was carried over, in the old days, ten years ago, when we didn't have money, that entire amount of three million dollars would fund the special education budget, the entire thing. So we wouldn't have a turnback because we took the entire Circuit Breaker and we actually paid for the services for the children out of that money. So when I'm frustrated and upset by this is because we have said now that we've been fiscally prudent, we're, we're going to have that money in reserve so that we could do some things, such as, I asked Ms. Obenchain to come back and look at inclusion and see if there's a recommendation. So if I'm thinking in my head, we got three million dollars in Circuit Breaker money, and she came back to us and said, we're not doing inclusion right and servicing our children right, so we might need to hire, I don't know, fifty, let's just say fifty support staff to help the children in inclusion classes, fifty. She could come back to us two months from now, make that recommendation. I'd be looking at it and say, hmm, that's only two and a half million, and we got three million in the Circuit Breaker account. Maybe we could do something like that. That's what we would use that money for, is actual services for kids. So when the mayor's saying that that was a turnback, it wasn't a turnback, because we as a committee could make one vote right now. Mr. Almeida, drain the three million dollars out of the Circuit Breaker account and put it in the budget. And then we'd have three million dollars to spend on whatever else we wanted. Could that happen, Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
By a vote of this committee? Quite simple. We could spend that three million dollars in a heartbeat, because as I just said, and Ms. Obenchain came up, we have so many needs, we could spend that money right now. But we didn't. We kept it in the reserve. My frustration is because we look at that in one meeting, I asked the question, we got the answer. Now, without telling anybody, we just stripped half of that away. So the money isn't something that, don't be mistaken, that says it's a turnback. It's not a turnback at all. It's not a turnback. What that is, is a reimbursement for money that we already paid out, we, the school budget paid out, and they reimburse you some money for Circuit Breaker. That's what that is. It's reimbursing school budget funds, so that's how we got this money in. It's not a turnback, like in the city where we don't spend the money and it goes to the general coffers. The school department does not turn back money like that. Whether Jay Sullivan said it was legal or not, or can be okay, sure, if we chose to take a vote to do that. But we didn't. We just slid the money underneath, and that's how we're going to go about it. So to me, that's not okay. We still need to look at it, Madam Superintendent. And the McKinny Vento reimbursement's only five-hundred thousand. I recall getting a notice that last year was like eight-hundred. Did it go down? And the, the legislature is supposed to be now funding that almost at a hundred percent. So if we spend a million bucks, that should be a million bucks.
Last year, we were reimbursed five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. The year before that, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The year before that, five-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars.
And that was from where? Because I've asked that question before, and those aren't the same numbers, so.
That's what we received. That's the last three years.
The city received it, right?
Yes.
So the city gets that money?
Yep.
Doesn't even come to us. So what if the city got seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in the budget? Are we going to get two-fifty back?
Then the city would decide what they do.
I think we, we need to pump the brakes on this a little bit and, and, and talk about it further. I just feel very passionate about the fact that you do your homework, we ask the questions, and I feel, I feel bad that this conversation even had to happen, because we shouldn't have been having this, happen to have this conversation like this. With that, I yield.
And I will, I will echo something. I do, I do take school transportation very importantly. We're still working on it, I got a meeting set up with the MTA reps. We're still working on that. But at the same time, I would not favor what Mr. Agar said, and we will, you know, so we don't have to give the money to the city, we'll drain it. That's not the point. We're going to do what's best for the kids across the city, whether it's transportation, whether it's special ed teachers, whether it's services. This isn't a race to spend money so that you don't help school transportation. This is a race to spend money where it's needed, for the kids first, and transportation is part of that. That's how this came out. It was the only area where they allow a turnback. I didn't know that until I talked to Jay Sullivan. It was nothing to do with this discussion. It was in the initial eleven million. As I said, I fully expect to be working with the MTA on school transportation, and we're going to keep going forward on this. And I do appreciate the city making an offer to help us. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt, it merely supplements transportation for our kids. That's what this is. Anything further on transportation? Sorry, trying to end that one. Nutrition, anything on nutrition? The last one we have tonight is nutrition.
Did I miss maintenance? I, I don't think we talked about maintenance today, but I have a couple of maintenance-
Security and maintenance department were together, Mr. Agar.
Sorry, I have some maintenance questions.
Um, why don't we finish nutrition? I don't have a problem going back for a couple of questions. Anything on nutrition?
One question on nutrition.
Go ahead.
The positions called, I don't know, custodian, whatever the wording is?
Utility worker.
Utility worker. Are they full, like, I don't have it in front of me right now, but where are we at with the, with the?
We have one vacancy, and I'm in the proposed budget, I'm asking for five full-time.
Which would lead to how many? Ten, whatever?
It's, it's roughly ten, yes.
So at one of the meetings, I had asked a question about whether a person could leave the, that position and go to custodial. Has that been worked out?
They can leave at any point they want to. If they're, if they're, if they're from the original, again, I, I don't want to, I seem to be misspeaking a lot today, a little tired this weekend, but, so I'm not going to say that if they're the original people who were in the jobs when we did this changeover, that they can come back at no harm. If I'm not mistaken, maybe Tom can correct me, there was a one-year period that allowed all of this movement to happen. So they can apply for a job like any other person can apply. They're not guaranteed the job. Someone else could get the job over them, but they, they can move across contracts, across units, I'm sorry, within the contract at will, like everyone else can.
Yeah. I just don't think, you know my stance on it, I didn't think it worked out well, but what I would recommend is that if people were in it, you know, if I was a custodian before and then I moved into the, to that job, you should be able to go back to the union, whether they're one year or not, they should be able to go back and keep their seniority and do what they need to do as far as a custodian job, because there's one district and we have needs in those departments, in my personal opinion. If that's not the case, I'd ask the superintendent to bring that forward back to us, so that it just would be treating people fairly. You're in one job, you think it's going well. I could work for a year, think it's going well for the year, and then all of a sudden, it doesn't go well, things change, whatever, and now I'm not. So why I should be stuck, or have to go back and lose seniority or whatever? I would ask you to look at that and come back to us with a fairness proposal, because I think it's just treating people the way that they should be treated, in my opinion. With that, I yield.
With that, I yield, okay. Mr. Agar had a couple of questions. We jumped, we went to security and maintenance, he didn't get to ask them. Mr. Agar.
So I see some of them, like, the same thing I was talking about before, head carpenter, there's a number in there. Then, but it's all one person. I, personally, I would like to see those all broken out, so that we know.
The leads, you're talking about the leads?
The leads, yeah. One says head, which I think is really a lead, but it says head.
It's, it's an old title that, that's been around longer than any of the others.
Then one says lead, then I, I don't see one in the other.
Because there's not enough employees.
How many employees are needed for a lead?
There's only, there's only four.
Four?
You need, um, three, I'm sorry, you need three or more.
Three or more. So then if I go through this, in the plumbers, there's no lead?
No.
But there's three plumbers?
There's not three plumbers. There are three, there are three positions, but they're not filled.
So once they do, there'll be a lead?
Yes.
The, the other piece of that is the job descriptions. I've asked for that in the past, and the answer was, there's no job description, it's just the, the senior man gets it, or a woman-
We will, we will be coming up with a job description for the committee to vote.
Oh, good. So I just think if we're going to pay the lead, whether it's three thousand, four thousand, whatever, I personally would favor something with teeth, you know, like a, like a foreman, we talked about that the last meeting. And I'd even go so far as to say, I think if we had a, a legit foreman where there's responsibilities, they could get paid more. But right now, we're basically, in my opinion, giving away money for no, with no apparent benefit, because there's nothing that they can do when, when I look at what's been the process going forward, is, in the past, has been just basically, I don't know, it just, it's just something that I think needs to be looked at and totally changed. So in the bottom one, you got storekeeper, and storekeeper, is there any leads in those departments?
Which department, what contract are we in?
Storekeeper, maintenance.
There's no storekeeper in the maintenance.
Whatever, whatever unit, it's under the maintenance budget, so that's why I'm reading it. Says storekeeper, curriculum supplies, storekeeper-
Is it, is it the?
Says Russell Lewis.
Okay, yes.
Is there any lead pay in that?
Yes. He's the head, there's one who's lead. So there's two storekeepers, one takes a lead role, and then there are two storekeeper helpers, so to speak. There's four people in that department.
And does the second person get any stipend?
The way the department was broken up was there was a, a storekeeper lead for curriculum, The way the department was broken up was there was a, a storekeeper lead for curriculum, teaching and learning side, and then there was a storekeeper for the custodial side, or general supplies. Two different locations. Now they're all in, in one location, and all the supplies are in one location, so it's changed the dynamics of how things are done.
Yep, I understand. And I think, I think you can understand my point. I think the superintendent can understand my point. We have four people that you just mentioned that are storekeeper-related. We got two of them getting paid the lead. That means you divide four by two, that means you got two, that means you don't have three, so therefore they shouldn't have a stipend. But nothing sometimes goes the way that it should, in my opinion. The only other question I would have, and would be a suggestion to the superintendent, is that we have groundskeepers in here at 59,000 for additional groundskeepers. And I mentioned this at the reorg meeting. I'd like to see what the cost-benefit analysis of, or doing some privatization work in that regard, as well as looking at a laborer type, a more entry level, to do some of that work. That is, I believe in the budget was 30,000 for a laborer. That's open. But whatever the number would be, it would be lower than this. So I'd ask the superintendent to look at, trying to figure out any other way to do that, that makes, just makes more sense. My last question is on the laborer position that's in there. Do we have an update, Madam Superintendent?
We do not have an update. The job was posted, we had a couple of applicants, and the interviews, as far as I know, have not yet happened.
Yep. So I've asked that too many times, I guess. But the memo that came out to ask for the laborer position, I believe, was March of 2022. And we're now in April of 2023. So I, I don't need to even, I don't think, go into, into that.